I want to thank everybody for being here, first of all. We start off the evening with a public hearing. We're going to ask Darren Rice, our Director of Finance, to review their Financial Integrity System of Texas score. That's a required public hearing that we have to have. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Rice to come to the podium. When he's finished, anybody who has comments can go to the podium related to the first report, and you'll have two minutes to make your comments. So, Mr. Rice, please.
President Sanders, members of the Board, Dr. Stockton. It's my honor tonight to present the School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Annual Financial Management Report. The purpose of the Financial Accountability Rating System is to ensure that school districts will be held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices and achieve improved performance in the management of their financial resources. The School First Rating is based upon an analysis of staff and student data reported for the 2011-2012 school year and budgetary and actual financial data for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2012. The School First Accountability Rating System assigns one of four financial accountability ratings to Texas school districts: Superior Achievement, Above Standard Achievement, Standard Achievement, or Substandard Achievement. Conroe Independent School District received a rating of Superior Achievement. This is the 11th consecutive year since the inception of the system. Superior Achievement. We also have a perfect score on the system also. The Superior Achievement Rating is the state's highest, demonstrating the quality of Conroe ISD's financial management and reporting system. How the ratings are assessed? The School First Rating System rated Texas districts based on their answers to 20 separate questions. Each question was designed to assess the quality of the financial management of the district's resources. As we go through these questions, they'll be looking at our district's fund balance, our cash and our investments. They'll look at our audit reports, and also our student and staff ratios throughout the district. So we'll go through each one of these questions. Question number one: Was the total fund balance less non-spendable and restricted fund balances greater than zero in the general fund? For the 11-12 school year, we had a fund balance of $98,071,116. Question number two: Was the total unrestricted net asset balance in the governmental activities column in the statement of net assets greater than zero? Yes, we had $60,265,840. Number three: Were there no disclosures in the annual financial report and/or other sources of information concerning default, unbodged indebtedness obligations? Basically, that question is asking, did we pay our bills? The answer is yes, we did. Number four: Did we file our annual report on time? Yes, we did. Number five: Was there an unqualified opinion in the annual financial report? Our goal is to receive an unqualified opinion, and we did. Number six: Did the annual financial report not disclose any instances of material weakness in internal controls? Yes, we received a clean audit. Number seven: Was the three-year average percent of total tax collections, including delinquent, greater than 98%? Yes, we received 99.73%. Number eight: Did the comparison of PIM's data to like information in the annual financial report result in an aggregate variance less than 3% of expenditures per fund type? Yes, we had 0% variance. Number nine, on this indicator, you just needed to match one of these. We actually matched two of the three. And if you look at the second one, if the district's five-year percent change in students is equal to or greater than 7% criteria, we had 13.08. And also, the third one, property taxes collected per penny of tax effort is greater than $200,000. Ours was a little over 200,000. Number 10: Were there no disclosures in the annual audit report of material non-compliance? Once again, we had a clean. Number 11: Did the district have full accreditation status in relation to the financial management practices? Yes, we did. Number 12: Was the aggregate of budgeted expenditures and other uses less than the aggregate of total revenues, other resources, fund balance, and the general fund? If the district's aggregate fund balance in the general fund and capital projects was less than zero, were your construction projects adequate in finance? Yes, our aggregate fund balance was $154,855,305. Number 14: Was the ratio of cash and investments to deferred revenues in the general fund greater than or equal to 1:1? The answer is yes. Number 15: Was the administrative cost ratio less than the standard in state law? TEA and state law sets a cap on the percentage of their budget that Texas school districts can spend on administration. Did we stay within the cap for districts of our size? Districts our size, the law is a ratio of .1105, and our ratio was... Number 16: Was the ratio of students to teachers in the ranges shown below according to district size for a population equal to or greater than 10,000? The ratio is a low of 13.5, a high of 22. Our ratio was 16.6. Number 17: Was the ratio of students to total staff within the ranges shown below for a district equal to or greater than 10,000? The range is a low of 7 and a high of 14. And our answer was yes. Our ratio was 8.796. Number 18: Was a decrease in undesignated fund balance less than 20% over the two fiscal years? We had no decrease. Number 19: Was the aggregate total cash and investments in the general fund within zero? Yes, we had $115,112,868 cash and investment. And 20 were investment earnings in all funds excluding debt service and capital projects. Did they meet or exceed the three-month Treasury bill rate? Now, some further disclosures that we have for our financial management report. The first, we're required to disclose reimbursements received by the superintendent and board members. These reimbursements include meals, lodging, transportation, overfuel, other. As we can see, Dr. Stockton had reimbursements of $1,381.99. Mr. Mel Brown had reimbursements of $630.15. Ms. Linda Sasser, $412.75. And Mr. Joe Michaels, $212.85. The next show is the outside compensation and/or fees received by the superintendent for professional concert consulting and/or personal services. There was no compensation. The next disclosure is any gifts received by the executive officers and board members or any first-degree relatives. And this is gifts that are in excess of $250. As you can see, there was no gifts received. Next disclosure is any business transactions between the school district and any board members. And there was business with Mr. John Husman of $768,138.50. But I would like to say that this above amount reflects normal business transactions between Conroe ISD and the employers of Mr. Husman, which is Soul's Insurance. Mr. Husman's received no commissions from these revenues. His relationship predates this membership, his membership on the Board of Directors. We're required to show the first quarter of expenditures, 2012, 2013 year by object code. So if we look at our expenditures for our payroll for that quarter, $65,928,598. Contracted services, $8,944,960. Supplies and materials, $5,252,851. Other operating, $2,191,894.06. No debt service payments, capital outlay of $605,107.90. Additional financial solvency questions? Within the last two years, did the school district draw funds from short-term financing? No. Answer is no. For the prior fiscal year, have a total... For the prior fiscal year, did the general fund have a fund balance less than 2% of total expenditures? Answer is no. Question number two: Has the school district declared financial extendancy in the past two years? No. Third question: How many superintendents has your school district had in the last five years? One. And number four: How many business managers has your school district had in the last five years? Another disclosure we're required to have is the superintendent's contract. I'm not going to read the full contract for you, but if you're interested in that, I have handouts here. And this presentation's also posted on the finance website for CISD.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. If anybody has any comments, if you'll please come to the podium and state your name, and keep your comments to two minutes. Any takers? I was assuming you all showed up for the first presentation, but I guess I was wrong.[658.12][658.12](Laughter). All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Sanders, we're completing the public hearing.
As we started, you know, we are thankful for our school district. We just want to acknowledge that with a round of applause for our great school district.[674.32][674.32](Applause). Thank you for all the hard work. All right, I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:12. If you would, please stand with me as Dr. Brown leads us in the invocation, Ms. Haynes, and our pledges.
That's right. Our most gracious God, thank you for all you do to enrich our life. Help us to always be, always remember to be grateful for all your gifts. Keep us ever mindful that we need to use those gifts to serve you and our nation. In the matters that come forth this board, keep us mindful of our responsibilities to students, faculty, administration, and to the taxpayer. Remind us that while we need to work in harmony, that we need to work in harmony even when we're not in uniform. When we disagree, let's do so agreeably. Let us be transparent, not only with each other, but with the public in everything that we do. We pray for your watch care over those who serve in the armed forces and who protect the freedoms we so richly enjoy in this country. Help us not to abuse the freedom. These things we humbly pray.
Miss, join me in honoring our country and our state.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Our... On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Item 2A, awards and recognition. Special district recognition, Conroe ISD National Merit Scholarship Student Recognitions. Dr. Stockton.
All right, Mrs. Drummond, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, will come and present this item.
Good evening, President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, and members of the Board. It is an honor for me to be here this evening to give, for all of us, to give special recognition to all of these students for their academic achievements. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, better known as PSAT, the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as an initial screening of approximately 1.5 million entrants. Around 50,000 students with the highest PSAT and MSQT selection index scores will qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. In early September, about 16,000 students, or approximately 1/3 of the 50,000 high scorers, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically able young people from all parts of the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state-representational basis. They are the highest-scoring entrants in each state. In February 2013, approximately 15,000 semifinalists will be notified by mail that they have advanced to finalist level. We also are recognizing National Hispanic Recognition Program. This identifies academically outstanding Hispanic/Latino high school students. Each year, the NHRP honors nearly 5,000 of the highest-scoring students from approximately 235,000 Hispanic/Latino juniors who take the PSAT and MSQT. And the National Achievement Scholarship Program is an academic competition established in 1964 to provide recognition for outstanding African-American high school students. African-American students may enter both the National Achievement Program and the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT and MSQT. Of more than 160,000 students to enter the National Achievement Program each year, over 4,700 are honored. A group of approximately 3,100 outstanding participants are referred to colleges for their potential for academic success. A smaller group of about 1,600 are named semifinalists and have the opportunity to advance in the scholarship competition. Before I recognize these students, I would like to recognize their principals, and I think they're all in the back of the room. Dr. Curtis Knoll from Conroe High School. Mr. Tommy Johnson from Oak Ridge High School. Mr. Greg Colson from the Woodlands High School. Dr. Mark Merle from the Woodlands College Park High School. And our Academy Headmasters, Dr. Mike Papa Demetrio from the Academy of Science and Technology. And Dr. Susan Caffrey from the Academy of Science and Technology. Students, when I call your name, if you will come forward, Mr. Datrien Williams will give you a certificate, and then you're going to stay up front so that everybody can see your lovely faces, okay? And at the end, parents be ready because we want to recognize you as well. Our National Merit semifinalists for 2013-14, Anastasia Alasenko. And parents of these National Merit semifinalists, would you please stand? Ladies and gentlemen, we want to congratulate you on your outstanding performance academically. We know that you are excited about your next steps. So congratulations to you. Please join me in recognizing these ladies and gentlemen. Now you get to shake the hands of all the board members. So we're going to start on this end. You guys come out this way, and you're going to circle around.
Congratulations.
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 Some of them...
Congratulations.
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 Just give friends one of those.
Congratulations.
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 Okay, our next... We're now going to recognize our students who are recipients of the National Hispanic Recognition Program.
And Dr. Meeks is going to make sure she checks with the students outside in the photo op to make sure they come back if they're on the second list as well. Okay, our recipients in the National Hispanic Recognition Program are Jack Agron. And Derek Waggoner. And would the parents of these young scholars please stand and let us recognize you?[1794.94][1794.94](Applause). Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. You're on the road. You're ready. Please join me in recognizing these young people for their actions. Okay, and we have our last group, our semifinalists in the National Achievement Scholarship Program. Michaela Bankston. Tristan Newman. Humphrey Ubobi. Congratulations. I think I might be missing one student, Keen Chin. He's not here, okay. Would the parents of these two young scholars please stand? Thank you very much, congratulations. You can shake the hands of the board.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item 2B, citizens' participation. Ms. Ferris, is anyone registered to address the board? All right. The next 30 minutes have been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board has adopted a complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provide that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, a person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of the district's complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those who have registered to address the board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations that represent five or more must appoint one representative to present their views to the board. Ms. Ferris, please call the first person who has signed up to address the board.
Mike and Janie Metter.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to visit with you today. Before I get started, I want to tell you what a great respect and admiration I've always had for school board members. I know you don't do it for the pay, I know you don't do it for the recognition. You do it because you have a passion to make things better for our children, our school districts, and our county. I work for Montgomery County. One of our, one of our big things that we try to dwell upon is economic development. The sharpest tool in our toolbox is our school districts. And thanks to you guys and ladies, what you do provides us with the tool that we need to attract economic development. Thank you for your service. My name is Mike Metter and I'm here tonight, I guess an outsider, I'm not a Conroe graduate. I went to school in Willis, Texas, 100 years ago. About three years ago, I had an opportunity to speak to the teaching staff. And one of the things I talked to them about is the impact that my teachers had on me when I was going to elementary school, junior high, and high school. They have an effect on us even to this day, how we run our life, how we do our business. The teachers that we had taught us work ethics, character, discipline, honesty, respect, how to be a good winner, how to be a good loser, when to hold them and when to fold them sometime. In other words, because of our teachers, we pretty much are who we are. Even after all these years, I've got, in Willis, there are schools named after people that taught me, that coached me, that paddled me, most of them did. Almost all of them did, I think, that's got their name on these schools. But it had an effect, it helped guide me through my life. And I know school districts struggle and struggle with naming schools. And I know there's different ways to do it. There's selection committees. In this case, I think the school board's going to vote, they're going to name school. My wife and I are very honored to have had elementary schools named after Hauser Elementary, after my wife's dad, Metter Elementary, and Willis School District. And what an honor it was for our family. I mean, it was, it was just a tremendous day for us. And I'm thankful that they were alive to see that their service was recognized. All the years that they served the school district, it was recognized by people. Soon, soon you have an opportunity to honor a great educator, that's a Conroe School District educator, Janet K. Bartlett. Has spent 30 years of her life dedicated to teaching our children, molding them, shaping them, guiding them through life. She, her work ethics and her dedication to teaching, her passion is legendary. I'm here tonight to urge you to give all of our educators hope that someday they too can be recognized for the service that they put in for our school districts, teaching our kids life lessons. And I would ask you to consider naming one of your elementary schools Janet K. Bartlett Elementary. And I thank you for your time.
That's a hard act to follow. Anyway, I'm Janie Hauser Metter and I'm a retired school teacher, 20 years with CISC, and I am proud of that. It's an honor to stand before you tonight and talk about my friend Janet Bartlett. And this audience tonight is a group of CISC students that started kindergarten here. We went all through junior high, high school, graduated from Conroe High School, went to college, and we all came back. Some of our parents went to Conroe Independent School District. Our children went to Conroe Independent School District, and now some of our grandchildren are going. And that's a neat thing. And among our group, we were football players, we were cheerleaders, we were drill team, we were track team, we were debate team. And we talked about wearing our uniforms and our jackets, but then we remembered they don't fit us anymore. Okay, I want to talk first about some things that Janet and I've talked about in the rest of the group. Is when we went to Sam Houston Elementary and to Anderson Elementary, how when we still go back there, we can still smell the milk and crackers. There's just something about those buildings that reminds you of that. And then when we go over to Travis and Conroe High School, we think about all the roaring of the pep rallies and the wonderful teachers that we had while we were there and the wonderful experiences. And at Sam Houston, we learned, we were so proud, we learned to read, we learned to write, especially in cursive, that was the most wonderful thing. And then we also got to do arithmetic. We didn't do math, we did arithmetic. Two goes into two goes into two. And we call it gazinto instead of goes into. But anyway, we think about Dick and Jane and we think about Spot and Puff and what happened to all that. Now, we try to help our grandchildren with their homework and oh my gosh, it's like they're doing algebra where we were doing gazinto. But anyway, I remember distinctly that I got a whipping in the third grade for talking. Can you imagine that? And I can guarantee you that Janet Bartlett never got a whipping. Okay, we represent old Conroe and we used to talk about the older people, some of our school board members' parents. Anyway, Harold Pryor, J.L. McCullough, Mr. Montgomery, we talked and talked about the older people. Well, what scares us now is we are the older people. That's really scary. But anyway, the words to stand for gold and the white and love our song Tiger Boogie, those things will forever be with us. And our group tonight represents teachers, administrators. I'd like to introduce or recognize this Bonnie Wilkinson, everybody, she's our hero and everybody loves her. Anyway, we have principals, I see Drew Ann. We're represented by librarians, Patty Beverley. We've just got a whole group of people here that are so proud to put Janet Bartlett's name before you. And we even let our mayor, who was a Montgomery Bear, Webb Melder, we let him come. And then my husband, county commissioner, he was the Willis Wildcat, but we still let him come too. And we just want to say how very proud we are to nominate Janet Bartlett and would love to have a North County Elementary School named after her. Thank you.
Item 3 is our consent agenda, I believe it's already been handed out.
Amen.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by raised hand. Motion carries, opposed, right. Item 4A, curriculum and instruction, Texas Accountability Summary, SAT, ACT, Advanced Placement, Tellpass, results for 2013, Dr. Stockton.
Dr. Hines, we're excited about your report tonight, as we always are.
Good evening, President Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It is certainly an honor to present to you our 2013 state accountability, our Tellpass, SAT, ACT, Advanced Placement, dual credit, and everything else we can throw into it. And I do want to acknowledge a few people that are here tonight that helped with this, compiling this data. Edith Upshaw, is she still here? There's Edith, she's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Also here tonight, Sherry Sunderman is here, Sherry.
Why don't you all stand up?
Yeah, stand up. Lee Kelly is here, Coordinator of Assessment and Evaluation. Also for instructional materials, which you just approved the committee for tonight. We also have Ime Villarreal, who's our College Rating Specialist, she works with dual credit. She's also the person behind, who sets up our test boot camps. We just had one for parents last week, it was a very great success. Also Debbie McNeely's here tonight, our Secondary Language Arts and Advanced Placement Coordinator. Greg Schiff is here from Career and Technology. You recognized Mr. Schiff last month when he was the Outstanding Administrator in Texas in that area. So all these folks worked really hard. Also want to acknowledge Tammy Zunkers here because you just approved the Instructional Materials Committee. And also on the, on the agenda was the Shack Committee. And here is Dr. Sharon Sturci, who we recognized during the summer outstanding, is also here this evening. So we have, and Cheryl Hyam is here because we had science curriculum on. Oh, and, and I almost forgot, we're going to hit the Tellpass scores. And Erin Carlisle is our bilingual ESL Coordinator, and she's here with us tonight. And it's truly my privilege and honor to work with such an outstanding team. We have a great CNI team and they do lots of good stuff. And you'll, you'll hear about a lot of it this evening as we go through this. Let me start with Tellpass. That is part of the No Child Left Behind Accountability System. It's for our English language learners. And what this is, is this requires states to show annual increase in the progress of learning English and attaining proficiency, and not just in English, but also in the English used in academic courses. And so the goal is in Texas to move up at least one proficiency level each year. You're going to, one of the things we talk about we're measuring is ELPS, which are the instructional standards that are designed to ensure that students are taught academic English that they need for school purposes. And Tellpass is the required assessment that we use to measure this progress. And Tellpass raters are teachers that are trained to assess our English language learners for the Tellpass. They're, one of the reasons it has to be trained is because not everything is a paper and pencil test. There's, there are four language domains that are being assessed, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And there are four proficiency levels, beginning intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. And we do this with all of our students that are English language learners in grades kindergarten through grades 12. So it's a lot of, lot of students. And I won't read these to you, but there are proficiency levels. And you can see everything from beginning with little or no English ability with our recent arrivals to advanced high, which are grade appropriate. Who takes, Tellpass, I just mentioned that, it's all of our English language learners in kindergarten through 12th grade, regardless of whether they receive services. So if a parent denies bilingual services and just wants their child immersed, we still would assess the progress of that student. For students in grades 2 through 12, they're able to use an online multiple choice test for reading. Obviously, for kindergarten and first grade, we use a holistic rating scoring process. And for all the K through 12, it's holistically scored for listening, speaking, and writing. And this is a summary of how we've done, this is just a look back at five years. And you can see that the goal, especially as a student's been in the program longer, the goal is to move from beginning to advanced high and then of course, exit our program and no longer be an English language learner. And so we look at that, one of the things we really look at is that as students are getting into that second, third, fourth grade, are we moving them on and exiting? And you can see we've made great progress and we continue over the last several years to move students. So just for example, if you look at 2013, in third grade, 54%, 54% of our students scored advanced high. And in 2009, it was 50%, so we've moved up in that area. Fourth grade, 54% also compared to 51% last year. So it's been up and down to 50% back in 2009. So we've really tried to work on this and we've shown some steady progress and a lot of success of moving our students. And this is our five-year trend. Wanted to show that to you this evening. Shifting gears, and really this is kind of a three-part presentation this evening. That was the first part with Tellpass. The second one is to share with you how we did in the accountability system, which is, Texas has a new accountability system called the Texas which is, Texas has a new accountability system, uh, called the Texas Accountability System. It's a really interesting name. Uh, and I will try my best not to confuse you. We, we, we joke about the fact that there's, uh, they had lots of objectives in this new system, trying to tweak some of the limitations in the prior system, um, that people would complain about, that one child could, could be the difference in a whole ratings. They've tried to, 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 to really diversify the rating system. However, in doing so, um, and one of the other goals was to make it easier to understand. But I think they accomplished some of the others, I'm not sure they made it easier to understand, but, but it is more comprehensive than the prior system, so it covers a lot of things. Uh, the, the, for this year, for the short of it is, there's accountability rating, and there's three levels. You would either meet standard, meet an alternative standard for an alternative school, such as Hawk would be under that system. And then the other one is if you don't do well, you would get the label improvement required. Um, and so that is the, the ratings that were issued this year. Uh, in addition, there were three distinction categories that campuses could earn. So not the district level, but campuses, so they also had a place where they could get recognition for doing very well in some categories. And they're based on, uh, performing in the top 25% of student progress, so that, of the comparison schools. And all of these, these distinctions are based on taking campuses and grouping them with like camps, and saying, how did you do against schools like you? If you're in the top, top quartile, uh, I mean, in the top 25%, that's one of the distinctions. The other one is being recognized for academic achievement and, um, uh, math and in reading. So those are the different recognitions. So this is our, the district's accountability rating that we received this year. And you can see that we met standard, um, and we, uh, these are the, the progress that we made in the four indices. There's four, there's four indices, and I'll, I'll try to go through each of the four and explain what they mean. And this is the first year of this system. In fact, we'd already taken the test before we even received the system, and it really wasn't until just recently that actually we received this information. Uh, and you can see there, how it scored. So we did meet the standard, we were scored in four indices. In addition, there's some system safeguards I'll mention a little bit. We'll start with index one. Index one is really the easiest one to understand. It's how many tests were taken and how many did you pass? It's just a, it's just a raw score, you know, it's based on, we're going to add up all the tests, and how many did you pass, and that's your score. And, and the score was set at, there's a phase-in standard that they'll move through at what we call Level Two Phase-In Standard, and that's how they, they, uh, assess this index. And here's how we did. Uh, eighty-six was our score. To meet standard, we had to have at least 50, a score of 50. Uh, and that, we wanted to give you a context, so how did the state do? Seventy-seven was the state score, raw, so, uh, just to give you a context.
Dr Hines, do you anticipate that target score will move, or is it always set?
No, I think that will go up over time as the state gets a feel for what's acceptable. One of the things they're looking at is kind of that scatter plot of where does everybody fall? And I think they're going to eventually start saying, down here, it's not good, wherever that, that mark is.
Scatter plot.
It may, the line may change. In fact, a lot of these index standards may change over time as they learn more about it and as we learn the system.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Is eighty-six seventy, seventy-six, is it percent of a hundred?
In, in this case, of a hundred, there's a hundred, of a hundred percent of the tests taken, we passed eighty-six percent of.
Right.
Does that make sense? That's pretty easy to understand. They won't get.
Well, yeah, sometimes those, those percentages, they're, they're not percentages though, so I thought I'd ask.
And, and, and you're right, and when we get in these other indexes, they're not percentages. Earned points by how you perform in a category. And some of our students count more than once in these other indexes. So they, they can, they count multiple times, or they cannot count multiple times. They can show up in your denominator more than once, or they can show up in your numerator and your denominator. So the idea is you get points for students. Index two is student progress, and this is, this is an index that measures, pretty much it's set to measure value added. How much did you grow a student? So if a child can get credit for meeting a growth expectation, still failing the test. If I moved him from a forty to a sixty, that's pretty good, and maybe I got a point for moving him that far, but I didn't get credit for passing on the index one, but I could get credit in index two. In addition, they give you credit for exceeding expected growth. Uh, it's, you exceed. One point for meeting it, two points for exceeding it, um, and it's a, it's based on a weighted performance. So here's how we did. Uh, we had a thirty-eight score, put that in perspective, Texas had a thirty-four. As a district, we had to have at least twenty-one, or we were going to be a improvement required district. Exceeded that, um, this is one that we really want to work on, because we believe if we move everybody and we keep adding value, all the others will go up.
Our district, our districts had the goal of improving, adding value for a long time, much more so than any given score of any test. But how, how, since we didn't have a test last year's equivalent, yeah, how are they measuring? Uh, did they take a benchmark at the first of the year or something?
We did get tests the prior year, they just didn't issue a rating.
Okay, so this is the second.
Second year of the test. We didn't know what passing was last year. We did have a standard, there was a standard set for the child. Now, one of, there's, there's a lot of complications, and I will try not to bog you down with all of them, but one of the complications is, you had to have taken the prior year test in the same format. And, and one of the things we found out was that students who, for example, took the Spanish version in third grade that exited it, took it in English in fourth grade, didn't count, because they didn't have an apple-to-apple comparison. Uh, would, they, they don't assess in science or social studies, because they don't have a prior year test, they're tested on a less frequent basis. So this is really reading, math, and seventh grade writing that counted in this. Uh, I guess E O Cs were incorporated in this for the high school. So it's, it's fewer tests, and if a student changed test, went from a star M version to a star regular version, they didn't know how to convert that, so the U D S weren't counted. There were a lot of students that were left out of this index. So that's index two. Moving to index three. This one is, uh, an index for closing the performance gap. In this one, the, the state was trying to look at, how do you do with your lagging group, students that are behind? So what this is based on is on each campus, not the district level, we're looking at all of our students that fall in the category of being economically disadvantaged, and then our two lowest groups based on ethnicity. Take those groups, those three groups, and make up your index three score. And it's very similar in that there's going to be a point earned for students that met the phase-in level, and you get two points if you meet the level-three score. Level three is, uh, for lack of a better word, in the old system, they called it commended, scoring really high on a test. If you get level three, get two points, one point for passing. And it's done by subject, and it's done for socio-economics identified students, as well as the two lowest groups for a campus or the district overall. And so that may vary from campus to campus, based on the school's makeup. So for index three, I don't know anything, the school district had a seventy-eight score, put that in perspective, Texas had a seventy-one, and to not be improvement required, we had to have it fifty-five or above. That was the cutoff, so that's what the yellow line represents. So that was index three, that's the index for closing the. Index four is for post-secondary readiness. This is the index that's designed to look at, how are you doing moving kids to the high end? And this one is going to calculate a score based on graduation rates, and really this year, that's all they use, is graduation. Um, that's, they didn't use the level three, but, but I'm going to talk about what's going to come into play this year. Index four is going to change, and so will the benchmark level, it will change. So this year, all they used was graduation. As you know, we have a very high completion rate in our district, and so we did well on this index. Uh, but it will change next year, and it will include also, um, the students by groups, um, so meaning a student would count as all students, and then they count again based on their ethnicity for the recommended plans or the distinguished achievement graduation plan. And then also for our star scores, and that is based on the final level-two standard, which I know is going to confuse you, not at the final standard, where they deem we should be, uh, on one or more tests for all students. And that one also is calculated by all and by ethnicity. So that's the post-secondary readiness. But again, this year, it was just based on graduation. So, uh, we did very well, we had a ninety-one for our score, the target was the seventy-five, put it in comparison, Texas had an eighty-five. So, uh, we did well on this, but next year, this index calculate different, and there will be a different target score based on state runs.
That calculation, they base it on recommend, getting the recommended plan, or they did it as distinguished plan?
Yes, and.
Some modified plan?
Those two plans, as well as how many students are going to hit the final level-two, if we know what that standard is, and, uh, and or above. So we can calculate that now. Our, our schools are already starting to look at that. We've been out and visiting, where they, they can kind of know, like, of course, it was last year's students, but they could say, based on last year, we would have had this, got to move students. And, and we're looking at that. How do you take a student, and you see that they're two questions right from being past that threshold? So how do I help add value to those students so that they can move, keep pushing them to the right, adding value, and get more students into that higher level of performance? That's our goal. Um, ultimately, is, that is a, an index to score that, so we can see we did pretty well, but the game's going to change next year on the next. System safeguards, I mentioned those, that, uh, this basically was the system the state put in to cover all the things that are required in N C L B, which is there's a safeguard for every student group for every test. It's, you know, it's a total number of, uh, tests that we had and, and, and we had to meet. Target again, um, is based on, have to meet a minimum standard. We had, um, I believe, what was our ninety-three percent, ninety-four percent for safeguards, safeguards? Participation. She had to meet at least fifty and at least ninety-five, and then seventy-eight for the graduation rates. The, so these are the different areas we're held accountable for. Then the, the distinctions, I mentioned those a little bit already. There's three possible designations, these are for campuses only. And the way this is, the way this works is it lists all these indicators, and if you're in elementary school, the ones that apply to you, you have to be in the top, uh, quartile for half of them. You do that, you get a recognition, and I'm going to show you what it looks like. And for a high school, it's a third of them. There's a lot more for high school. So for, uh, I'll give you the example, for student progress, it's campus only, it's based on the met-standard rating, um, campuses in the top 25%, they're care, uh, camp, compare, campus comparison groups from academic achievement distinction designation. So this is an example, this is Grangerland Intermediate School. This is their list of forty schools. They're grouped based on their likeness with other schools, based on size, mobility, the size of their, uh, limited English proficient population, and E C O D I S. Those are the four categories that they use to group everybody together. So here are the forty campuses, for example, that Grangerland was compared with, and they, they received a distinction in student progress. Their index-two score was a forty-two, and you can see how it compared to the other schools in their group of forty, with the bottom being twenty-nine, the highest being fifty-one. But that put them in the top quarter, that earned them a distinction. See how the distinctions work? So it's based on somewhat of a competitive model of, what did you do against schools like you? Now, they have a distinction also for progress in English Language Arts, and I won't read them all to you, but these are the categories. I will point out that attendance is part of both reading and math performance. You're going to see that. And one of the things we learned as we went out and looked at the data is that sometimes the difference between being in the top quartile and the bottom quartile is like point three. Schools are real close. Top one might be ninety-seven or five percent, bottom might be ninety-six. Not a lot of separation in there. Uh, but it is something we're working on, because every absence counts, counts. That close, really, really starting to take a look at that, how can we improve attendance? Uh, so these are the indicators, and you can see, uh, that several of these, for example, like A P I B, number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten, number eleven, are high school only. So the high school have more indicators, that's why they only have to be in the top quartile for a third of them.
A P I got I D.
That we don't have an I D.
Okay. Where does it stand for?
International Baccalaureate. So this is an example for Rice Elementary, what they're, and you can see the Qs, the quartile, how they did. They had a ninety-seven percent, this is a good example, they had ninety-seven percent attendance, and it was in the second quartile. Um, but they, they also were in the first quartile for better-than-expected progress in English Language Arts, and also for writing. So they were, they had fifty percent or more, were in the top quartile, got the distinction. They have one just like that for math, looks very similar. Change it out for math, and they added Algebra One participation in performance. We did very well in performance, we're going to increase our.
Excuse me, if you're distinguished, Rice has distinct, got the distinction, is that, if you get it for math, you got it period, or is it, get it for math, you get it for?
It's, there's three different ones you can get. Progress, math, and reading.
So one doesn't qualify you for the distinction, it just qualifies you for that distinction?
Speaking, each distinction stands alone. They got it, they get it. They have.
And you could get one, two, three, or none?
Correct. We had, we had thirty campuses that received one or more distinction.
Sure you said that, I'm just kidding.
It's okay, I apologize. It is, it'll, it is new. We're still, we're still, we're still, we'll still run, uh, find something new every day, we'll think, oh, I didn't know that. Um, and this is an example of math, and this is the Woodlands, and you can see for a high school, they had more things rated on. So they had to be in the top quartile for at least a third of them, if there were seven, but they hit three of seven, which is at least a third. So they received a distinction earned half, for greater-than-expected progress, for S A T participation, and for S A T performance. So those three put them in the top quartile. So those are the distinctions, that's what they look like, and, uh, like, any questions about accountability or the new system before I move on?
Yeah, can you back up to that screen? Just a quick question. Uh, we take great pride in the amount of A P and dual-credit courses, not only that we offer, but the amount of tests that are taken. Does the, does it just so happen that the amount of tests taken count against us if they don't pass? So the more tests we take, or preparation they have for college-level of, you know, whether they pass the test or not, uh, what, why would the Woodlands be at twenty-seven percent on A P dual-credit course completion? That, that just blows my mind, because we know how much they do.
Well.
I'm not just thinking, our, all our high schools.
This just says completion, that doesn't say.
Right, there's two different, there's, there's two marks there. One is how many are for doing it, and how well did you do. And so what this one is saying is, hey, for the participation, and, and, and remember, it's in their like group, how did they compare to their forty schools? And twenty-seven percent participation did not, didn't put them in the bottom half of their forty.
Schools just like them, Highland Park, Plano.
Awesome, that's like, big, big.
Big league, that, I mean, that's.
That's what, you know, I was going to make this comment later, but the comparable forties are, are really a motivation for campuses, because they're looked at, um, with like schools. So, I, something like this, we'd assume is very high, look at schools just like them, that's an area we want to prove.
Yeah, it, it does, it raises a lot of those discussions about, what are our systems? What are our barriers? Do we put up obstacles? Eliminate, discourage people from taking more, those kinds of things, those questions should come up, you look at your data, because like schools are beating us. So, um, this is something that we all look at and try to learn from, but they did, they did, they did well overall, and they got a distinction in math. Okay, so if everybody's okay, I'm going to change to the third gear, which is, um.
So you understand the accountability system now?
Did I say anything wrong, William, but I need to correct?
The board didn't have to take a chance for us to stay recognized.
And, and William's been doing a great job of going around and doing presentations that he could help our staff that are familiar with this. And it'll take a little bit of time. Just giving a few highlights on our college readiness portion of this report. And again, I want to acknowledge everybody helped put this report together. And Imae really did a lot of work coordinating the whole report for us. Turned out, turned out real well. So I hit the highlights. I know I've taken up a lot of time already. The, we had thirty-two National Merit semi-finalists in two thousand and thirteen. We're proud of that. Twenty-six Hispanic recognition scholars, four national achievement scholars and seventy-one National Merit commended students that we couldn't have fit in the room tonight. But a lot of students that we're excited about how they did. Seven point three one percent of our graduating seniors graduated under the distinguished achievement plan. Set has the four advanced measures like being a National Merit student, a certain number of AP courses, as well as a third year foreign language. We had thirteen hundred and two seniors that took the ACT with a composite score of twenty-three point three, which was an increase for us. We had three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four students that took seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight AP exams. CISD has, this is something that, there was an article, I think, that ran recently about this. We also had the Texas AP Scholar, two thousand and thirteen state. The number one AP student in the state was a Woodlands High School graduate, Timothy Nicebow. Took twenty-five total exams, some of which were courses he didn't even take while he was in high school. He scored a five, which is the highest he can make, on twenty-three of those tests and a four on the other two. He had a four point nine two average. And he told his mom that when he, when he went to college, they gave him a hundred and thirty-seven credits.
Isn't it a hundred and twenty to grad weight?
So. I read, I read the note from the mom and basically he said that he was studying to be an engineer and so a lot of them, they didn't even take towards his degree plan. But he's still got elective credits. It's good stuff. It's pretty exciting. So this is, this is our trend over the last few years with National Merit students. And again, we're really working on that, trying to maximize that number. Feel like we can even go up more. And I know a lot of the programs out there to raise awareness, such as the best prep bootcamp and really getting more students into more graduate courses. This is our graduation continuers GED and dropout summary. As you know, out of a hundred percent, the state kind of puts them into four categories. And when, did, did they graduate with their cohort four years later? We had eighty, we had ninety-five point five percent compared to the state's eighty-seven point seven percent of the class of two thousand and twelve. Did they continue, meaning they stayed for a fifth year? And, and, and even though we don't have great success graduating fifth year students, my point is that if they're not enrolled, there's no chance. Want them enrolled, they didn't graduate. If one percent received the GED and one point five percent that dropped out were unaccounted for, compared to six point three percent at the state level. So we've really continued to work really hard in this area. We have, it's an ongoing challenge. We have work to do. This is our eleven-year graduation trend. You see, take a look at it. In two thousand and two, we were at eighty-eight point two percent. And two thousand and twelve, we were at ninety-five point five percent. We're proud of that, that being, been able to just chip away at it and keep working. We still have work to do. Our goal's a hundred percent, but, but we're making progress. We're in the right direction.
Isn't it true, you know, you count up to ninety-eight and a half percent that graduated in some form or fashion? Okay, then that leaves one and a half percent. They didn't, I mean, don't we lose track of some of them? I mean, in other words, I've heard about us chasing kids down, not necessarily for graduation, but just to get them off of our books. You got to prove they went to school somewhere else, even in another country, right?
Correct.
And so it's not like missing one and a half percent kids, period. I mean, some drop out. I mean, I got that, but one and a half percent of them, not necessarily all of them. We, we might have lost, I lost track of.
Yeah, we've had, we've had better luck. We've gotten better at finding kids over the years, but certainly that we still have those that just disappear. Especially if they don't want to be found or if they've moved out of country and just don't know it. If we had reason, if good intelligence, if they moved, we can document that. We just can't say, I think they did. We have to be able to prove it. We have to at least have some, something to report that I talked to the uncle who confirmed it or the grandparents confirmed it. For to get proof that they moved, sometimes they don't tell us.
So if we had four thousand graduates talking about sixty percent and a half? And, and how many of those are that are about that? That, no. I mean, I know they all are as far as. You understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have a good answer. I would say, I would say the majority, but I don't have a percent. I think it's going to vary from year to year too, depending on the students in this, in the cohort. There are different, different reasons or different things that come up. Now, I will, I will point out that they do detract or subtract from our set if a student is in prison or jail. They'll take them out of our, our list. So they don't count. Do lose them. Better subtract. Let me go back. This was our percentage of graduation plans. I mentioned this earlier. The blue part at the bottom represents our distinguished achievement graduates. The red is our recommended plan graduates. And the green represents our minimum plan graduates, which is changing. All this is going away and next year we'll probably, or later this year, we'll have to adopt new policies about graduation plans. So they all have a new name. So get recommended that, minimum, they'll come up with new names. Won't go into that tonight, but we'll be back to talk about graduation plan later. You can see the trend is very positive. Captured a bigger market share of advanced program, uh, diploma. But we can do better, better. SAT performance, just to give you a quick look. CISD is in the green bar and this is critical reading, math and writing scores. And you can see we outperformed the national average as well as the Texas average in all three tests. Certainly proud of that, but we want to keep working on it. So we had five twenty-one in critical reading, five forty in math, five oh one in writing. Our composite was fifteen sixty-two compared to Texas's fourteen thirty-seven and the nation's fourteen ninety-eight. And this is our trend, how we've done reading and math. We have several years of data. Writing has been around now about seven years, so we're starting to get lots of data on that. As you can see, it's been up and down, but generally we're trending positive. The national level has actually started to really flatline and states actually declined a little bit as it's increased the percentage. And we've increased the percentage of test takers as well. Our goal is to keep increasing the number of test takers, but to not decline in our scores. This is a trend, but our trend in number of students tested in the SAT has been very positive. We tested two thousand, one hundred and nine students last year. The ACT, this is just a quick look at how we did. Again, we're in the green and ACT covers English, math, reading, science, and then there's a composite score. And you can see that did very well compared to the nation and Texas average. From the ACT scores, they'll, they'll pull a minimum score and ACT says, hey, there's a pretty good chance a student's going to pass the class in college based on these scores. And this is the, the chart that shows the percentage of our test takers that met that standard in all the tests. Now there's, it's actually, it varies from test to test, but I just pick all for tonight. You can see forty-two percent of ours passed or met the predictive score in all their tests compared to twenty-six of the state. This is just a quick look at our ACT score trend over the years. So again, we've increased our test takers over the years and we've also increased our scores. We've had a few spike years. We've had some down years with the trends they positive. The blue is the English, red is the math. And you can see our math scores are the highest in the group. Tammy's, I don't think I introduced Tammy, I saw Tammy earlier. Tammy's our elementary math specialist and I know she works on a lot of that stand-up Tammy. Our math scores have been. All right, so looking at our CISD ten-year advanced placement trend, this year we had three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four students who took seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight exams. You know, that one student from the Woodlands took five of those. That's why we popped up, I think. But the, you can see the trend since two thousand and four. We've, you know, substantially have made a dent and we keep moving. And it is our goal to keep, keep growing that market share. We think, we think there are a lot of our students that could take AP tests that we haven't reached yet. Really working on that. So not only are we, are we testing a lot of students, but we've also managed to keep our scores competitive level. And you can see how we compared to Texas, the nation, the two point nine mean score. Proud of. This is a list of top fourteen. Don't ask me why I picked fourteen. I picked fourteen because I could fit fourteen lines on here, but this was the top fourteen exam and still read it. And so going down to, from world history was the most popular test taken. Get seven hundred and sixty-eight test takers to calculus at two ninety. And there were several tests that below that, but I just picked the top fourteen. You can kind of see how social studies is by far and away the share of our advanced placement test. Have, number four is English to junior level. And further down is English to senior level. We used to have, I'll get in that and dual credit. So this is our dual credit. Fifteen hundred ninety-three courses that were signed up for this year. And I, and I was talking to Ms. Villarreal about it. I said, well, we're down this year and we're looking at it. But they, they changed the test. There's a new test to qualify to take college courses. What's the new one called? TSI. It's a harder test. We found that students have a more difficult time passing that in high school. The other, the other one we have looked at is some of the courses that we were teaching that previously, that there's been some new teaks. They don't align with the dual credit, the college credit for. So we've had to not do it for dual credit. So there's been a few changes there. We've had to offer a few less things. It's always fluid if there's available faculty on this campus. But we did add this year the automotive, automotive technology. Fourteen oh five seven. There are forty-five students that are getting dual credit for automotive technology this year. So this is just kind of a general look. You can see by far our most popular is the English thirteen oh one, English thirteen oh two. And I know I've had a conversation with a couple of schools about really expanding that soft learning. See that, I think, jump up. In addition, we have a great partnership with Lone Star College. We have eight students last year that completed the welding certification through the workforce readiness program and fifteen students that completed the phlebotomy certification. They do that at the Conroe location. It's good as, they're also getting credit for high school. It's also a dual credit, but it's not getting them university credit, it's getting them certification. In addition, we wanted to share, I think it was Ms. Haynes that asked about this a couple of years ago, wanted to update. There, we had nine hundred ninety-two certifications earned from students in our career in technology courses last year. And this is the list, how they fall out, what they, what areas they were in. Seventeen vet assistant certification, hundred ninety-nine OSHA safety certification, one hundred thirty-five first aid. See the different kinds of certifications that are out there. Some of them related to auto tech, like the Valvoline oil certification. We had forty students that earned their certification. That's not even. Mentioned Ms. Sunderman's here and she's helped compile a lot of information in the full report, which is available online. And we'll, we'll make that where everybody can see it tomorrow, as well as there'll be a PDF of this version. But there's a lot of information in there about how our students do when they go to college. This was based on the survey from last year's graduates. This is what they told us. Fifty-seven percent said they were going to go to a, a four-year university. Twenty-eight percent said they were going to a two-year college. And, and over the last few years, that's really grown. That piece of the pie has gone up about a percent every two years last year. So it's gone from like twenty-four to three percent. Two-year college and we have the vocational technical school, two percent, eight percent for full-time work, six percent for part-time, five percent military and two percent other. They could claim more than one. And I know everybody's always wondering, where did they go when they went to the university? We know our number one college destination is Lone Star College. About a quarter of our students. But beyond Lone Star College, last year, again, it's been that way for the last several years. Texas A&amp;M was number one with a hundred and thirty-eight. And then number two last year was UT Austin. And that, that's been up and down number two or three. Sam Houston State has really started capturing a big part of the market share. You can see where they fall in. And UTSA, a few years ago, we even had more at UTSA. It's.
Dr. Heinz, do we have some sort of course correction plan in place?
I'm sorry?
Do we have some sort of course correction plan in place?
You mean, you mean to say that twenty-seven right there?
We gotta work on this.
We'll work, we'll work on that. Yeah, that is, so UTSA, you used to have a program, we were talking about that, because we used to have a bigger number go to UTSA, but they used to have a program where they could transfer to UT. And I guess they discontinued that and so had a drop off. This is the last year. It'll make a difference. That's basically the summary of your question.
I would like to make one comment. Thank you for putting that report together. Dr. Heinz introduced our CNI department. As you know, during the months of September and October, Dr. Heinz and I, Mr. Struman and Dr. Gibson go to every campus and have academic conferences. And, and one of the questions that I ask every one of the attendees is, are you getting the support that you need from our CNI department? And without hesitancy, they rave about the people that are in the audience tonight. And they do such a great job and they work very, very hard. And, you know, there, there are days in my office I need to get up and walk around. So I'll walk through CNI and I never find anybody to talk to. Because you're out on the campuses and, and that's what's critical. And, and they certainly model service to our, to our teachers and to our principals. So thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
Thanks for all that hard work. Next item on the agenda is five A administration naming of the new facilities information. Doctor?
I will ask Dr. Gibson to come up to the podium and present the names that have been submitted for your consideration.
Evening, President Sanders, board members and Dr. Stockton. As you saw this evening, naming of our new schools is a very exciting process. If you remember in August, we presented to you the process for naming our new schools. And tonight we have the names that have been submitted by the public for your consideration. They are as follows. For Flex fourteen, which most of you know is located next to Bosman Intermediate.
I don't know if we need to read every one of these.
I'm not going to.
Okay. We've got this list. Please don't consider it.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go. And Flex sixteen, which is located in the Wood Forest Development. And as you know, we will return in November to ask you to name these facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson.
Right, item five B, approval of GMP. Miss, I'm sorry? I think you had a question or question.
I apologize. The process, we're, we have a discussion on the, this meeting or next meeting?
Tonight it's informational item and we'll come back next month and ask you what your preference is.
Does that mean there can be no discussion?
You're welcome to discuss.
That was a question.
It's just a question.
If you want to, you can.
Probably more relevant.
Well, I mean, I was, it was, guys, what your preference was, was discussion. I don't know if we discussed before we both or during voting or, or no, no comment, no feedback?
Usually, I mean, in the, I'll only, as kind of reference in the past, it wasn't done until we actually voted and there was a nomination on the floor and discussion was. But that's just a historical reference.
If you want to talk about them, talk about them.
Some of the, some of the folks I didn't necessarily, I didn't recognize.
Right.
And I know this is a very brief, high-level synopsis of, or what the comments that were submitted.
The administration, I guess you could provide each board member with additional information if we requested it on one of the nominations.
Whatever information we have.
I mean, from the information that was submitted, you could provide the board member with additional information that you have.
I had already asked. I had already asked. So that probably in, the ones that was interested in, they give me.
And some of the names we have very little information on. Does anybody submit any name? But we will certainly get you whatever we can find on.
I mean, it helped me out. Definitely unfamiliar.
Well, so I'm trying to understand because I'm new, like you, the process, you know, like today we had a citizen participation, which I guess will be open at the next meeting as well. But the next meeting is actually when the vote will, will take place and we'll have discussion.
But we won't be, we won't be discussing with the audience. They just, our discussion will be in my.
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah.
Any, any citizen can come forward and within our 30 minutes, if they register, and some probably will at the next meeting. And then we'll have nomination, we'll make nomination. And if it, if it's seconded, then it moves forward to a discussion item and then we would vote that nomination either up or down and move on to the next.
We are a liberty to someone, it's not necessarily on the list.
That is correct.
Yes, yes. The summary of policy is we come, we come in August and we announce the, August, September. No, we come and we announce the schools that we are needing a name for and then we ask for public input. We bring that input back to the board for your consideration. You're certainly not bound to stay with those nominations, but it's supposed to be a reference. And then we'll come back in November, we'll basically come up, announce the school and then the board takes it from there.
Any other questions? Good discussion. I don't know what else. Well, I think we had some good discussion. We understand the process a little better. Dr. Brown?
I'd like to see us, since we can't discuss outside this meeting, I'd like to see us, everybody just kind of, maybe bring their top one or two. And if no one, if no one's interested, then we don't spend a lot of time on those names.
So you're suggesting us to do that at the next board meeting?
That when we, if we just, everybody kind of put their top two out there.
At the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be my preference, that we bring back, I mean, each one of us, persons or two names. It's our preference that we, we can narrow this down to a maximum of 14, right?
If everybody brought two and they were all different, we'd have a maximum. Something like that, true.
So you would do that before there would be nomination?
Well, I was, my thinking was that we narrow this down as opposed to, I have two names tonight and then we have to vote on every person.
You're not voting on every person though.
Or get a second on a person, then we have discussion on every person.
Well, if you haven't, if I understand this correctly, if you have a nomination, somebody seconds it and then we get a majority vote on that person, then whatever school that that was thrown out there for, that, that person would, that school would be named for that person.
And, and.
Is, is that correct?
Best history is, that's exactly the way it happens. But if you want to talk about them, okay, it may be the best, I just put this out there. If you want to talk about them, it may be best to do it tonight because when somebody makes a nomination in a second, okay, there's some discussion there, but.
Then a vote has to be taken.
I'm, I'm just going to tell you in 10 years, I have never seen a nomination go down. Okay? By the time it happens, it happens. You know what I'm saying? So if you want to talk about why Ann Richards ought to be, or not be, or whatever you want to say, I mean, that's just, that's just my perspective because am I wrong of, some of you board members have been around, you know, is that, is that not the truth?
Well, that, that has been fact, fact. I mean.
And yeah, I'm not saying if it's right or wrong. I'm just saying if you want to talk about them, because you may never get to the.
You're our parliamentarian.
But it's really not a nomination at that point if you're making a motion and get it seconded. Now then, that motion can be a motion.
It can be, but it never has been, not since other years.
So you're usually our standing parliamentarian here. So.
Of course, when did I get to check?
I don't know. Just because you always know the rules.
You're a rule follower.
You're the rule, I mean, you know, you know parliament, parliamentarian. I can't say that word tonight. Anyway, procedure.
You're good at making it up.
So.
Yeah, I got this.
What is the, what would be the best forum to if, if there's board members that want to have a dialogue about candidates prior to actually somebody making a motion on the floor, because that's what's going to happen at our next board meeting? What, what's that process based on?
The reason I said what I said, I just, I just think it's, I think it, if you want to talk about them, it just, it just, tonight is a whole lot, there's no pressure, no vote. You can say what you want to say, you can ask a question because we really aren't supposed to have discussions amongst us.
Okay.
Not really, we're not. Let me put it that way.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just throw my questions out of front. Are there any of these nominees politicians?
Yes.
Or public officials? Which are they?
CJ Haynes.
And you can take that one off very easily.
Take that one out?
I would have nixed that to begin with.
Man, I gotta get into a different list. Where's the other list? I don't know that.
And I see some got him voted on.
When you say politician, do you mean retired?
Yes.
Or active?
Either one.
Okay. Roy Harris was a politician and Richards was a politician. Alan Moore was a politician. CJ Haynes is a politician. Donald Trump is a.
He's a politician.
Anyway, moving right along, I don't know about George Washington Carver.
Is he a politician?
No.
But generally, for those of you that have served and gone through this process, the discussion.
From what I understand, I mean, this is, I don't think there is any discussion.
There is. I'm telling you, there is. Well, that's why, so there generally is not, not discussion.
That's my concern.
There's usually discussion, there may be discussion about the name that is, that is, that is, that is moved, the motion's made and the second's made, then there's discussion about that name, but really, none of the other names ever seem to.
See a lot of them.
Because that motion's on.
But anyway, to finish that thought, Linda Sasser is a politician or has been and is.
She, she asked her board, she asked me to ask her name.
Okay. You're getting somewhere. Tom Delay was a politician.
Okay. This is just for my own entertainment.
Are you entertaining?
I am.
Just checking.
Anyone else have any discussion or?
What did we decide about the idea of?
I don't think we decided anything. We're just having discussion since we're not voting on anything.
Sorry to interrupt you, Brad.
That's okay. Go right ahead.
My concern is that there is no dialogue and I'm having to vote on folks that I don't necessarily know or that I have an understanding as to why we're voting on that particular person. But what ultimately happens is by default, that person, there's no dialogue, we're just voting on that person and I'm having to feel some sense of obligation to be.
Either up or down on that name, right?
On that name. Though, again, in the past, and I can only speak for that, names that have been submitted, I believe, or at least I can speak for myself, each individual board member took the responsibility to look at the names and then investigate the names they were interested in and, you know, they kind of went through the process of elimination and then they did their homework on those individuals and came to the meeting prepared on the nominations or the people they felt they could support.
But it seems that the first one up is the one we're deciding on.
Very much.
Well, that's an upper, it's an up or down. I mean, it's a majority vote. I mean, it's.
That's, that's.
There certainly, there certainly can be discussion once the motion's made.
Made, yeah.
Certainly can.
About that name. Yeah. And I mean, I guess.
I think most people find it awkward to have whomever that person is there and we're discussing and you kind of feel a sense of pressure to go along with the majority, if you will.
Plus, the person that is nominated or, or may be nominated might be sitting in the audience as well.
Right. And that's my concern.
And that creates issues as well.
It's really hard because there are so many great names.
That being said, we don't.
I understand.
Mr. Patterson here, Charlie Patterson, was he a CISD educator?
Yes, sir.
An administrator and assistant soup? An lobbyist?
A deputy superintendent.
Deputy, excuse me.
Public servant?
Served at principal of three sports schools. A bullet, how's that?
Any type of public servant, service?
Being like.
Outside of education?
He was a rotarian. A deacon at the First Baptist Church of Conroe. His family, he was raised in the Conroe oil field. His family worked, his dad worked in the oil field, his mother worked Oakley. Had two brothers.
Right. Former principal CISD, I believe he was principal of three campuses.
Name Houston, Lamar and Wilkens, Wilkens, I believe. I know he opened Lamar and I think he opened Wilkens, if I'm not sure.
Are there any that are still CISD employees on the list?
Rebecca Page.
There's a couple on here, let me walk through them. Becky Page. Hartwell Brown's name on here, is on here. Just to add to confusion, that's also his dad's name. So if it's in reference to Hartwell Brown Jr., he's still under employment. Dr. Stewart.
But Dr. Stewart is a retired, and she's back on contract.
She works half-time for us.
Yeah. But she's a retired CISD employee.
As opposed to still full-time.
Are there any other retired CISD employees?
Janet Bartlett. Um.
Vender.
Taking her name off, based on her request.
Cindy Carpenter's deceased. She was one of our teachers.
Deceased.
Yeah.
Hartwell Brown Senior was, was a principal, was he an assistant?
He was principal at York.
All right.
His, his wife Shirley still works for us.
Shirley Brown isn't.
Mike Fithian's retired CISD principal. Mary Curtis Taylor's retired coordinator of orchestra. Linda Sasser's a retired CISD teacher.
Arlene Lindsay.
Arlene Lindsay's retired. Sandy Keldorff, Sandra Keldorff is retired CISD.
I believe Ms. Knight was a district.
Yes.
Hersel. Isn't that who that is? Never mind.
Lee Witt, Franklin Lee Witt, retired. George Branch we talked about.
And, and since Dr. Brown's kind enough to share Linda's request, I will tell you that Becky Page also felt like, you know, that was not done with her permission or knowledge and she also asked that her name not be considered just out of consistency with not naming on it for an active employee.
And Ms. Bartlett, is she still employed?
No, she's retired. There's a Ms. Ion Burns, according to the information, was retired. She's deceased.
And Mr. Moore, judge?
Former.
Former board trustee.
Board trustee. It changes the loop.
Was he, he was not a CISD employee?
He was a dentist.
He is a dentist.
He's a dentist and he is a former board trustee for what?
I believe 11 years.
11 years.
Okay, so a trustee for.
And when did Janet Bartlett retire?
There's probably someone in the crowd who knows that answer.
Who?
2006.
And he, she is teaching for a department. Then she's substituting.
She's substituting. I believe she's still substituting.
Any public servant outside of the teaching?
So how many of these retired teachers did you count? How many of them were retired teachers?
I didn't count them as I went. Give me just a.
Sounds like a good deal.
We have several of them.
Well, I'll just throw this out there, since we're discussing, you know, there has been a history in the past of naming schools after board members, former superintendents, educators that have come to an early demise for some unfortunate reason or another. I think it's safe to say that, you know, certainly in the case of Buddy Morehead Memorial Stadium or, I'm not sure that a school has ever been named after an educator. I, I personally did not know Dolly Vogel, was she a principal or an educator?
No, she was a teacher.
She was a teacher.
She, I believe she passed away during the school year.
I didn't know the history.
Over the next year, I believe.
Would that be the only, only exception to the teacher-only school that I know of? And I may be wrong here, but I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify history, okay? Because, well, Bonnie was multi, multi-principal, principal at multiple, multiple schools. You know what I'm saying is, principals has made it. Ima Jean Geesinger was not only a principal, she was an administrator. So I think Dolly Vogel is the only, only example of a, and even there, you know, again, she came to a premature demise and was honored by, or the desire to honor her memory, okay? So I would just like to say that, that it is of interest of mine to recognize educators and not necessarily board members. Not necessarily, say, not certainly, not to the exclusion of anybody, but I, I just think that if we would recognize educators, they're the people that are getting the job or have gotten the job done in the case of, yes, they must be retired in my opinion. I, I know Dr. Brown has a, has a firm opinion that somebody must be deceased to be named and, and I honor, I respect that. But if we're going to name it after somebody, I don't think they need to be a full-time employee of the district. I don't think they need to be in politics. You know, I just think there's, there's, there's plenty of examples around where people have been exposed to things that have gone down the road, you know, of embarrassment, even after having something named after them or having them change their name. So in that sense, but educators that have been retired, educators that have done the district years and years and years of service, Charlie Patterson, Janet Bartlett, those kind of people, I think they need to be considered.
I can agree with.
And so I just would just like to say that and I'm through.
I, I agree.
I agree as well. And is, I like, in words of what Mr. Metter said of, of those educators that are striving for one day, possibly having that ultimate recognition. So I, I agree with what you're saying, just for discussion purposes.
And let me say one other thing and then I am purely through. I, I was, I was, I was concerned for a while that, that recognizing somebody that had been in administration or superintendency or, or something like that would somehow offend the rest of the teaching population that has done such a fine job. And I have been duly corrected on that, for what it's worth. I am confident that educators are, and I'm sure there's somebody out there that, that doesn't want Charlie's name on a school. Uh, I am confident that educators are, and I'm sure there are somebody out there that, that doesn't want Charlie's name on a school or Janet's name on a school. But I hadn't met him yet. Okay, they, they may be there, but I hadn't met him. And I've heard quite the contrary in my, in my studies around town. So with that said, I think it's honoring one is, is, is in some form or fashion honoring all, uh, even though that person's name goes on the building. So.
With that being said, what's the differentiating? What distinguishes one versus the, any retired teachers, very well-deserving teachers in C I S D? What's the, what's the differentiating factor? We don't have that many schools.
Uh, that's correct. That's exactly what I said. And that's why I said that. I was concerned about nominating or even naming. I mean, even the successful naming of a school after one teacher. And then, you know, I had a second grade teacher that was grade two, and so did Ray. And, and, and any C I S D graduate out here in this audience probably had a second grade teacher that wasn't Janet Bartlett. I mean, just to give an example. But I'm telling you that I've had teachers and educators and administrators and public servants and leaders in this community tell me that's not a concern. But she has did. And, and there's other teachers on here and principals that have been retired and done a fantastic job as well. Gene Stewart and Marlene Lindsay, but without speaking. So, you know, I, I.
I think to answer to, to, to throw out a discussion on your question about what differentiates, um, uh, as those that are elected, I think we return to the public, public support. That, to me, one factor.
I get, I still struggle with that, uh, because based on John's argument, we're indifferent as to which teacher we chose. Because one represents all. Um, I, I do appreciate the energy and the passion behind a campaign. I, I can't say that enough. But at the same time, I don't, I don't want us to take it as popularity, uh, contest. And I don't mean to minimize or marginalize the efforts that have been put forth. But, um, like I said, I, we, we have many, many distinguished educators in C I S D, Conroe feeder, going to Conroe High. So I, I need a little bit something to help me, um, have a better appreciation as to why we should choose one over the other. That, that's kind of where I struggle with on that. Um, secondly, I'd like to, Wood Forest, I saw Wood Forest here received a ton of votes. I had several concerns with that.
And I had several concerns with that too. We've named a school after a street before, and I never quite figured that one out, but anyway, I lost that vote.
They're a company, and I hate to give the perception that this wasn't a arms-length transaction. So it seems like we're doing some sort of indirect advertisement either for the subdivision or the, or the bank. So either or, uh, I would hesitate to do. That's sort of my concern with that. And if you guys have any feedback on that.
Well, I think when you look at the names of Wood Forest, the only thing, when I would read the names was for all individuals that live in that development. So to me, they were trying to bring forth a sense of community and that I don't think they were recognizing their company. I think they were recognizing the community in which they live and they want to create a further sense of community. I mean, that's what I got. When I looked up the addresses of the people that had submitted, most if not all were within that community.
I, I, I can appreciate.
So that's where I think they're coming from. And to me, that makes sense. We want our schools to be within a community if you so choose to name a school within a community.
Agreed. We did, we did have, we did charge for naming rights to name the stadium Wood Forest, right?
But that's, but that was for the company.
Well, I mean, most people are going to perceive that Wood Forest Development is a company and the bank holds the notes.
Well, I'm not arguing either. I'm not arguing either way. I'm just saying the people that submitted those names from the community. And Wood Forest Stadium was a business transaction of which the district got payment for.
I would feel better if it was a check at hand before I did some conversions on.
I had a, I had a question.
Well, then we should have everyone on here submit a check if you're asking the community to do that.
Well, yes, if they have a corporation that we're naming after that.
We're not naming it after a corporation. We're naming it after the community based on the people that submitted it. That's all I'm saying.
I had a quick question for, for CJ, um, and, and kind of in response to what Datron was saying about, um, a well-known somebody may be, is, I'm understanding correctly, like you said, going out and doing your research. So if you have leaders in the community, people that have come forward that have, uh, spent the time and effort to put somebody forth, then that research includes going and sitting down with them or having coffee with them or at least having a phone call. Find out why is it so important to you that you're passionate about naming a school after a particular educator? Is that?
Well, I can appreciate.
Yeah, that's true. I think that's true. I mean, if, if you're thinking of a name, I think part of that due diligence is finding out why that person was, you know, uh, Datron's concern of several educators are on our list. What makes one better or why would you go with this name versus that name? Because any group that has submitted names is very passionate about the names and they're all wonderful names. So any are deserving. And so it's our decision to discern which name we want to go with. But I personally could have to do the due diligence on why I feel that name deserved it. And that would involve talking to people, some of these people that submitted these names.
Maybe y'all want to just tell me do my homework, just fucking well.
Oh, no, no, I'm telling you. I think, I think this is doing your homework.
I think this is doing your homework. Everybody does it differently.
I took one or two of those classes.
But when you ask about that and the number that come up here and, uh, are supporting anything, some of those people are, are feel that somebody said to me, I'm not sure exactly why I'm here tonight for this. And they feel pressured to
Support.
To support because somebody asked them to, whether it's in writing and just because they got enough people to write. And if you read some of the things we've gotten, we don't, they don't know much about the person other than they were a good teacher or they were good this. And, but they feel pressured also because of those moments.
You know, the other side of that is people like George Branch have been forgotten by most. I mean, my mama worked for him and, and I remember Dr. George Branch, okay? And like, you know, uh, like somebody else might remember, you know, somebody in this era, okay? And he was a good man. You know, it's, I don't know. I mean, they just were, they were just nominating superintendents and, and, and board members back then. You know, they didn't, they didn't, uh, really go down the principal route. But, uh, but, you know, we can talk about another name here, Charlie Patterson. He is a man among men. I, I've never met anybody that, that, that had a bad word to say about Charlie. And, um, I'm just telling you, he, um, he was a, uh, a guiding light in this district for a number of years. Yes, maybe that's the wrong, I mean, he was just.
He didn't sign up.
Well, I, and Datron, I applaud you for, I'm glad we're having this discussion. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't be having this. And I think this is extremely helpful.
I appreciate that. And I didn't want anybody to feel like I was.
I like it.
But, um, yeah, I don't have my peer pressure well, so I didn't want you guys to throw a name out there, and I had to.
Any other, if you want, if you want Donald Trump, you just need to set.
See, that was my first.
Just set up a meeting with him and do some.
I mean, you just, I mean, if we're going to get a check, we might as well get a big check.
No, in, in all seriousness, I, I can appreciate the, the, um, contributions that are, my wife's an educator. Let me preface the conversation by saying that. Um, my mother-in-law's a educator. I mean, from, from a generation of educators. Um, but yet I have an expectation that of, of my wife and any educator, that has to be great at what you do. Um, and you pay for it. Some may argue that you're underpaid for it. Uh, depends on who you ask. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure the majority of folks will say that they're underpaid for what they do and for the lives and, and, um, all that they contribute to our, our bringing up our young ones. Uh, and I would be the first as a parent to second that. I have three, three, uh, young ones, two of which are C I S D students as well. Um, but I still struggle with us singling out one educator. And, um, I just, I just, I just have my concerns with just singling out one educator, uh, simply because we're saying that one educator represents them all. And we're quite indifferent to which one we chose because they're all great. I'm pretty sure I could ask Dr. Stockton for thirty, forty, fifty retired educators that he would consider highly distinguished, um, from the local Conroe area over the last three, four years, and he could easily produce that list. Um, and again, I, I don't mean to take the energy or the passion or, or marginalize any efforts that were put forth here by any, any specific campaign. I don't have a dog in that hunt necessarily, but, um, that was my concern going into the election process, uh, next month. In addition, I had my concerns with naming after a, um, subdivision or a corporation or, I understand them. The residents of that subdivision, I understand their intent, um, was probably not to do that. But, um, as a person that's making a decision, I have to see all angles of that or, or consequences of doing such. Um, outside of that, 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 that's all I had.
Well, I can, I can also add though, eh, as far as, there's been a number of principals that have been honored school names, okay? And they have also been chosen from a pool of what I feel like, I mean, let's face it, they don't get that position. I know Dr. Stockton's hired a number of them and, and they're all fantastic individuals. Uh, for some reason, some of them have, uh, become beloved and, and, and received an honor. Bonnie Wilkinson, I mean, I can't explain why that principal versus George Branch, but it's happened, okay? And, and of course, George Branch has not had one name, which he still could. So I don't, I'm just saying, I don't know, uh, why, I mean,
uh, how do, how do other school districts?
Well, you know, we actually, um, looked at different policies and Dr. Brown actually is the one who wrote the policy.
It's been a minute.
He's just claiming that.
I did, I did a lot of research and they vary considerably.
So, some had committees that brought forth a recommendation.
Originally, we had, uh, under the original policy, we had it, uh, where it went to a committee that made recommendations to us.
We made a selection committee.
District level.
Found by that committee, but it was viewed by others. Uh, I, when I originally wrote the thing, I had it locked in. I had it, that it had a committee from location in which it started, uh, bringing recommendations. Uh, made it policy. And some, and there are a few, all those minds, uh, glossary that not named from that, living people. But, I mean, it's all over the board.
But I will say.
One policy that said, wow, this is easy.
But I will say, you know, to Dr. Brown, uh, because, uh, he did suggest it, I think, ten years ago, whatever it was, uh, you know, to choose a committee that was in that surrounding area. But by default, by opening it up to the community wide, we tend to get submissions of names that are surrounding those schools that we're naming. Because those are the people most interested. And so it ends up being kind of a more community-wide committee, if you will, because those are the ones that submit the names, create the campaigns, um, and have the most passion because it's in their backyard.
Yeah.
So it, it sort of becomes a default. But at the time when Dr. Brown researched it and wrote the policy and then the board adopted it, there wasn't a one-size-fits-all. There wasn't any rhyme or reason that every district or the majority of the districts handle school naming in a certain way.
And I did, and when we had the advisory, uh, first, I don't see that we got any, uh, better information there than we do since that committee's been removed, even though that was.
We're probably getting more names now.
One more thing and I'll, I'll take my seat, if you will. We did, we, you did say we had some, we currently have schools that are named after principals, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Multiple. And we are considered those few educators, correct?
Yes, they're.
All right, other comments? I just want to make a comment, so I've been respectful of everyone's time. In discussion about Wood Forest, I'm employed by the bank. I'm not employed by Wood Forest Development Company and I don't live in Wood Forest, but I will state that in the next three weeks, I'm moving out to Wood.
All right, man.
So I want to be upfront and I want to be as transparent as I can, but comments were made regarding writing a check. And I just want to make some comments that Wood Forest has participated, both human resources and financial resources, and junior achievement, Read for a Better Life, Montgomery County Fair, van trailers, stadium signs, food bank, Habitat for Humanity. And now a community is named after that organization. I believe that that organization came to Montgomery County to build a community. It's done exactly what it said it was going to do and has done and continues to do. And I'm just going to state that I am in favor of naming the school in Wood Forest after the community, not the bank, not the development company. But that I feel like that name does transcend Montgomery County in a very large way where they moved in. So, Eric, I've said my piece too. All right. Anyone else have any comments? So the checks be taken, Mr. Knowles.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. I didn't mean to. I didn't mean to say that Wood Forest wasn't an excellent contributor in the framework of C I S D.
I just didn't know what this game.
Five B, is that what we're going to?
If we have, if we have gone through five A, all right.
Well, I've never been here, what, how are we going to get the names here? Are we going to, is everybody going to bring?
Are we going to bring two back or what, what do y'all think on that?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that's a great idea.
I'm okay with that.
Could you just to point though, if, even if you say you're going to do that, someone can still make a motion.
Well, how, how about this? So as we do not embarrass any one member over another, would it be okay if each of us submitted names and I just read off the names rather than saying you done, you do this and you do that?
I think that's probably a better, a better submission.
So, so as the president, what I can do is that the next.
I think it's a great idea. Prior to the board meeting, submit our two names.
Can I amend that? Just, just if you hear me out, if you'll submit those to me.
Okay.
That's great.
That way the board members aren't talking about it.
That's great. I like that idea.
Can I also suggest that if.
We just read them all.
Right. But can I suggest that if we all chose Donald Trump, let's don't say he got six votes.
No, no, no.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to submit.
That, that, that good?
That's fun.
Okay. I, I think that's a great idea.
I think that's a great idea too.
All righty. Any more questions or have the questions been answered?
Thank you for having me, guys.
No, 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 this is a good discussion. All right.
What educations are.
I was going to say, it's nice when you got that as a discussion item, isn't it?
Yes.
How important, because we have so many great people named and nominated and it is going to be a difficult process just because of that. All right. Item five B is approval of G M P miscellaneous mechanical repairs phase two, Dr. Stock.
Easy Foster, you'll come present that item?
All right, President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it's my pleasure to bring forward tonight our recommendation that you approve a project we call the miscellaneous mechanical repairs phase two. We've selected Ellisor Constructors, uh, to be the construction manager at risk for this project. They've exhibited the ability to successfully complete many, uh, other projects of similar magnitude and complexity with Conroe I S D. And they make a good choice for this project. The project we're presenting tonight covers seven campuses. Uh, Knox Junior High, Matella Junior High, Haley Elementary, the Woolens High School ninth grade, Candy Creek High School, Oak Ridge High School, and Ford Elementary. The work we propose on these campuses totals in sixteen million, six hundred thousand, four hundred and ten dollars to be funded from the two thousand eight bond fund. At this time, we recommend that you approve this process, this project.
Amen.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor? Close, motion carries unanimously. All right. Item five C, bond referendum, Dr. Stock.
I'll ask Mr. Foster to continue with this item.
Yes, I'm Sanders. Dr. Stockton, members of the board, is my. Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it's my pleasure to update you on the current major projects that are funded with two thousand eight bond referendum funds. Starting with Flex School number fourteen, it's an elementary school next door to Bosman Intermediate that is scheduled to open in August of two thousand and fourteen for school next year. Project is approximately seventy percent, seventy percent complete. The exterior masonry is worked all the way around to the front doors. As you can see, they're preparing to do that work now. Interior wise, this project is, uh, approaching the finishing stage. So you can see that this is a picture of the interior of the gym. The coating for the exposed structure has been done. The base coat on the walls has been done. Next step here would be to start adding the, the colors that have been selected for this school. This is a, a look at the commentary of the stage. You can see the drywall's in place. The mechanical systems are, are near completion. As well, looking into the library, you see it's progressing, uh, at a rapid rate. We've also got many, many of the finished items in this, uh, you're looking at a classroom stacked with the educational casework, ceiling grids in place, things of that nature. Flex School number sixteen is the elementary school in the Wood Forest community off the Fish Creek Periphery. It is approximately sixty-five percent complete. It is on schedule. It is scheduled to open in August of two thousand and fourteen as well. They are likewise working around the building towards the front door. Uh, as you can see, uh, they're progressing well. They have not made quite the progress that, uh, that Flex fourteen has. That's due to their, their starting, they started at different levels, but started at the same time. But you can see their mechanical systems are in place, uh, their, their next step are the drywall, the framing, and then we get into the colors and the other materials going in there. This contractor chose to start in the classroom end, so you're starting to see some of the things you saw in the gymnasium on the opposite end of the building. They're just building it in their pattern from the other direction. And that is our opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Item six A, financial reports. I believe the board's been given those reports.
President, I, I'd suggest that we, uh, that night since we've been given those reports to review.
Thing of the committee?
You're okay. Have a seat.
Darren smiled. I think he's ready to go home.
Thank you for your hard work.
You know, he did, just for the record, he did have to present the public hearing, so.
If you would like to run those dollar signs across the screen, come on up and do that up, you know?
Like that.
We do appreciate all you do for us. All right. And we don't have an executive session tonight. Uh, item nine, legal.
Don't move.
Yeah. Item on our agenda, a proposed termination authorization.
Mr. President, I need that the board approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented and that the board propose the termination of term contract teacher Harold Gregory Goodrum and authorize the superintendent to get notice, Mr. Good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Favor? Close, motion carries unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you for being here. Sorry for the jinx.